Are we gonna wait for Joyce?
That's up to you.
She said she was coming.
She said, "Even then."
Oh, you did it too.
Is the chief coming or?
He is. He'll be here, but he's probably gonna be late, so we're not gonna wait on him.
Okay. Thank you for all viewing today's city council meeting. I'd like to call this special meeting of Clear Lake City Council and Redevelopment Successor Agency to order at 2:00 PM on December 17th, 2020. As a reminder, if you're on our Zoom meeting as a participant, please put yourself on mute unless you are speaking. We are currently live streaming this meeting on the city's YouTube channel and the Lake County Peg TV livestream YouTube channel. To begin, Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Perdok?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Claffey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Slaton?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Could you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilmember Claffey, why don't you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. While we're operating under virtual meeting guidelines, I will explain our meeting procedures. Agenda items will be open for public comment before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to comment on any agenda item should email the city clerk or submit their comment through our town hall portal. Comments received will be read aloud by either myself or a staff member during the agenda item. If you are on the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand to speak and you'll be called upon. If a remote participant encounters technical difficulties, I'll ask that we continue discussing the item and the participant can rejoin when the technical difficulty is resolved. Again, if you are a participant who is not speaking, please mute your computer to prevent distractions for the current speaker. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests otherwise or a staff has requested a change, in which case item will be removed for separate consideration. Any item so removed will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Flora, are there any items that need to be staff wants to pull?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Are there any items that any council member wants to have pulled? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved?
Second.
Move. The motion has been made by Councilmember Perdok and seconded by Vice Mayor Slaton. Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call?
Mr. Mayor, we should probably double check about public comment on any of these items?
I'm sorry. That's a good idea. Is there any public comment?
No one on the Zoom has their hands up and I have not received any emails or open town hall comments on any of these items.
I think we'll go ahead then with the motion. Motion and second has been made. Will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdok?
Aye.
Councilmember Claffey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Slaton?
Aye.
Mayor Kramer?
Aye. Motion passes. Consent items are approved. Okay, we'll now move on to business item number eight. Discussion regarding an exclusive negotiation agreement for the sale of property at 2,890 Old Highway 53 in Clear Lake. City Manager Flora, do you give us the staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, as the council's aware, as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency, the city holds a 29-acre property on the north part of the city between Old Highway 53 and Highway 53. Just a little bit of history, there was a tentative map filed on this a number of years ago, and then largely due to the Great Recession, this project didn't move forward. Recently, the city received some interest from a previous developer in restarting the project, and then as discussions have moved forward, we more recently than that received additional interest from another potential developer about the project. So, what we would like to do is have the council consider the two sort of proposals that are on the table, hopefully select one of the developers they feel like has the best chance of moving this project forward, and then direct me to sign an exclusive negotiation agreement, the draft of which is attached. Here, we would just finalize the name and details based on the discussion today. So, generally speaking, the project plans would be for approximately 20 lots on the 29-acre property, lots of at least one and a quarter acres of single-family housing. And so, I think both of the developers are on the line, so I don't know that I necessarily need to get into the details of each of the proposals, but I can just give some kind of brief highlights and then they probably want to say something. So, Mr. Adelman was the previous developer of the project. He's proposed a purchase price of $100,000, which is really like an option agreement, would include a $20,000 deposit and then have a five-year option to purchase. And then other considerations, he's provided a list of all the previous work that was done, and you know, he feels like that that work could be, make him be able to move forward relatively quickly by, you know, just kind of updating that and submitting the tentative subdivision map again. The second firm is Summit Development Group involving Barry Johnson, who I think several of you are familiar with, with some of the other projects that he's done here in the city over the years. So, that proposal would be $150,000 at closing. Intent would be to close escrow within 30 days of having an approved subdivision map and paying all closing costs. So, then there's a number of attachments here, things that were submitted. Mr. Adelman submitted a resume with, from Mark Flamer, who would be working with him on this project, and then there's a resume and a number of sample projects from Summit Development Corporation and Barry Johnson. So, I guess with that, that's kind of the brief overview, and see if there's any questions the council has at this point, or if you just want to hear from the developers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Flora. You say both applicants are on the, or both proposals?
It looks like Mr. Hughes, who is working with Mr. Johnson, and there's a phone number on the line, which I'm assuming is Mr. Adelman.
All right. Well, would either of you gentlemen like to add anything to what City Manager Flora has already presented?
This is, here we go.
Nothing coming up?
Can you hear me?
I can. We can.
Okay, yeah, I just got a thing to unmute. This is Dave Hughes. I've never done this before where I can actually see you guys talk. So, anyway, I just wanted to say a few things about the proposal. We'd probably do something very similar to what Mr. Adelman had done in the past, probably something in the area of 20 to 22 lots, acre and a quarter minimum, which is the current zoning. I know when we had a different city manager, I think there was some talk about 6,000 square foot lots and the neighborhood got up in arms, again because it's a more rural setting in the community. So, we would go along with that. I do note that now Highlands Water has been extended probably within 50 feet of the southeast corner of this property. So, we would extend the water to be available to the parcels, and they could obviously put wells in if they wanted to for irrigation or whatever, and septic tanks for sewage. Once we get the subdivision up and running, initially, I think we would, we were discussing constructing two to three spec homes, probably two to start with, and then it just depends on the interest from there. We'd put a minimum square footage in the covenants and restrictions for the home type, probably a minimum roof slope, those, some architectural controls, with the thought that we might also want to sell a few parcels. I don't know that the band would be there to build 20 homes in the next five years, but I would almost hope there would be. We are working, I am working with someone that feels there's a need for upper-end homes, let's say in Clear Lake. Incidentally, across the street from this property at 2,890 Old Highway 53, that home sold about a year ago for $428,000. So, it's possible that we could approach a half million dollars for homes that are brand new. By the way, that home was 1,650 square feet, and it was meticulous. I mean, the sellers kept the home in very good, very good condition, double garage, and then it had a detached double garage. So, we feel that there's some possibilities there for some upper-end homes, which I think really lack in our community. Well, homes in general lack in our community. We, there's not enough inventory now. So, I think I'll leave it at that unless you have any questions. That's a real quick, rough overview of our thinking.
Are there any questions from Councilman Claffey? Do you have your, you gotta put that down, or I think you're wanting to talk. None? Councilmember Overton? Okay. No questions at this time, Mr. Hughes. You think that, well, I guess I do have a question. So, you propose to, if you, if Summit buys us and we strike a deal with them, that they will build two to three homes immediately?
Yes.
Would they be, okay. Would they be on High Old 53, or would you be constructing an interior street and building them there?
Could you say that again?
I said, would the first two or three homes be built facing Old Highway 53, or would they be on interior streets that will be constructed?
You know, we hadn't really discussed that one. You know, if we, I mean, I'm assuming we're gonna put the street in as part of the process. I suppose probably if they fronted on Old Highway 53, there would be more visibility, but we hadn't really discussed where we would start, start building. You know, there's a, part of that's on some hill and a lot of oak trees, and those might be attractive to a buyer. You know, the flat area has no oaks, it's pretty much flat. So, there might be a little more attractive to start on the hill. But we feel there's a demand that needs to be met in that price range, and I think that's going to increase with some of the development that's happening in town right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Councilmember Perdok, you have a question?
Yeah, the mayor's question spurred a couple of questions I had. So, when he first presented this, it sounded like a small subdivision in your proposal, which I thought would require some streets and fire hydrant, fire suppression, that type of thing. Is that in your plan or not?
Well, that, I mean, that's part of this, the process of getting your tentative map. I, I mean, I'm assuming we're gonna have some minimum, minimum street requirements. I believe when the subdivision was approved last time, we had a different staff, and some of the requirements included curb gutter and sidewalk, which I didn't think was necessary in that area. Certainly paved street, possibly some sort of curbing for drainage, certainly fire hydrants. You know, again, with Highlands Water being right there, I believe they can serve the subdivision and, you know, provide, well, hopefully provide adequate flow for fire protection.
That, when you said curbs for drainage, did you mean include drop-ins for storm drains?
Well, again, it's fairly flat, but it should drain, and it'll have to be designed to drain. There is a creek that, a weather creek that cuts through the northern end. And again, that's, that's part of the design that we'll have to deal with when we go for our tentative map. Again, you know, curbing, sometimes people feel that's necessary, again, for proper drainage off the street. So, again, that's something we'd have to deal with through the tentative map process.
Okay. Question from Mayor, Vice Mayor?
I have a question for staff. Do we have any records of all the stuff that was previously prepared? Any drawings are still available of that?
As far as the tentative map and all that?
Well, it says here, you have improvement plans, all the calc's, stormwater prevention, all that stuff.
Mr. Adelman has all of that stuff. I mean, you know, we would have what was submitted as part of the tentative map process, but I'm not, I don't know that it's exactly everything that he has.
So, all these plans were not processed through the city yet?
The tentative map was approved, and then it expired, and, but the work was done. And I think Mr. Adelman is on the call, so he-
Alan, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. Adelman?
Yeah, yeah, this is Rob Adelman.
Hi, Rob.
Yeah, Alan, we, the tentative map was approved, and we did, we did a lot of the engineering calculations and the improvement drawings and had bids for the improvements. None of that was submitted to the city, so you guys won't have records of that, but most of that was done. There was a bridge improvement, and there was a few other things. You know, as far as, as far as fire suppression there, we would want to have some tanks up high on that hill and a well, probably along with the local water, the water company there. And as far as the market goes, I'm listening to Dave's comments, you know, our analysis is that it's gonna be really, really tough to build this subdivision now, given the cost of building, the cost of site improvements. You know, our bid from 15 years ago or so was about, and Mark Flamer is on the line here, he has the details, he's the engineer who did a lot of this work, in fact, most of it. And I believe the bid back then was about 1.2 million. Mark would correct, might correct me on that. So, you know, we're talking, it's probably gone up quite a bit since then, but probably somewhere around $75,000 per lot. There were paved roads going up, you know, and there was a bridge improvement. I agree with Dave that out there, you know, sidewalks really seemed out of place, probably don't need them. I'm curious, you know, Dave had mentioned, if you're listening, Dave, what was the size of the lot that just sold for, that one that sold for about $450, was that on a five-acre lot? I'm just curious about the size of the lot, because we're doing, we're doing the analysis on just market absorption and our hopes for being able to build this thing out, and looking at the building cost, even if the land was free, looking at the building costs and the site improvements, it's gonna be pretty tough to build there anytime soon and make it pencil, given the current environment, and especially considering we're coming out of this eviction moratorium, you know, in the next, next year, at the end of this month, anyway. You know, we're looking at $70 billion in back rent nationally and $700 billion in mortgages that are backed up. So, very likely, we're gonna see a repeat of 2008, and, you know, it's gonna be tough. Realistically, it, you know, right now, building costs are about $300 bucks per square foot, and if you do a quick look around the county over in Buckingham and other, other places, that, you know, comps, houses that are roughly a couple thousand square feet and nice areas, you know, you're getting the whole house built out now for about $3, $3.50. So, it's gonna be a tough, you know, economically, it's gonna be tough to make this subdivision pencil. And as I've told Alan, you know, just on our offline discussions, we're, you know, Mark and I, we're happy to provide the city, even if, you know, we just want to see the thing built. And if Dave's gonna work on it or someone else, we'll give you guys what we have and do everything we can to help you get it built, whether or not we get the contract to do it. We just want to see if the thing get done. There's a lot of work that went into this back in 2005 under the redevelopment contract. We put a lot of work and time in to get it sort of where it is. But I think the real issue is just gonna be market absorption and construction costs. You know, with all the insurance money floating around now, we're looking at a few hundred dollars a square foot, building costs plus land improvements plus holding costs, you're gonna need $450,000, $500,000 sale prices on a 1,600 square foot home just to break even on this thing. So, it's a, it's a tough project to try to pull off, and I just wanted to sort of give you my take on the overall picture, and also let you know that, you know, the work we've done is just going to be available to the city no matter what. We'll provide it and see, you know, anything we can do to help, help get it launched, we'll do. But it's a, it's a tough one with the current market. And so, Dave, I don't know if you're listening, but how big was that lot that sold for $450 last year?
It was about 1.3 acres, 56,600 square feet. So, it fits right in, fits right into the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's a solid comp. And you know, $450, $450 is gonna be about, probably about break even if the market holds, or, you know, I think the market's gonna drop like a rock with this sort of coming downturn based on just, just the eviction moratorium, the whole COVID, the whole, you know, whole thing. But that's, you know, it's anyone's guess what the market's gonna do. At $450 for these houses, if it's new construction, you get up into the high fours, you might be into a 5% or 10% profit margin, you know, with a lot of work to get there. But that's, that's sort of my take on where we are. And I don't know, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask. And I think Mark's on the line too, Mark Flamer, who did a lot of the engineering. So, feel free to shoot questions at us as well.
Vice Mayor Slaton, you have a question for?
Yeah, for Mr. Adelman. Are you fairly certain that you can be able to get financing on the one point, whatever it is, to enable to construct the infrastructure?
Well, what we would do, the only way we would be able to make this work is sort of what I think Dave was alluding to as well, is we would, we would try to build a bunch, we'd want to build the first row of homes right on the highway there with the least amount of infrastructure as possible. So, we'd, you know, I'd have to look into, so we would try to build a spec home or two or model home, try to get maybe some orders, and see if we could get, just get the process started. We prob, realistically, we would probably have to sell some lots to make the thing float, you know, to do some improvement. And at that point, it would be, really be phased, and it would be based on market absorption. You know, all I could ever tell the city with, you know, frankly, is that if the market can handle it, yes, we can finance it and build it, and we can do it as quickly as possible since we have all the, all the work done. I mean, the map, you know, we have a couple of things to, you know, check again with special districts and water capacity. And if I remember back in 2005, it was easier to put septic in than to extend the sewer line, was really, really pricey, it was like another million bucks or something. So, we were gonna go septic. But if the market would absorb it, we can finance it for sure. We can finance and build and sell the homes, but if it's not gonna pencil, it's gonna have to be done where we have, we keep, really keep the overhead down, not do any, almost no infrastructure, just kind of put some driveways and stake them out and build, you know, a home or two or three and hopefully sell them, stack out a bunch more lots, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe have a model home, or have a contract with someone that buys a home with a leaseback for a little bit where we can use it as a model. And then we would phase it, we would phase it. If I remember, I haven't looked at the map in a little while, well, a couple months now, anyway, but if I remember, there's a couple roads going up and some cul-de-sacs. So, we would phase it, that as soon as we had the market absorption, we'd build sort of a phase one and build one paved road coming up there and lay out a bunch more lots, and then get that going. But I'm in agreement with Dave too, that we would, the subdivision would have CCNRs, definitely have CCNRs, and we'd have architectural standards, maybe an architect, you know, sort of standard stuff, an architectural committee, so that we could sell lots. We would definitely have some restrictions on visuals, you know, the nice stuff like you see in, you know, plant subdivisions, you can't plant, you know, park your boat or your trailer out there. And we would ideally dedicate a park along the creek there for public use, is what I would propose, is have kind of a public park or at least an open space there as much as we can get along that little riparian corridor. I know Mark Flamer did some calculations that we have to redo the bridge there. The bridge needs to be redone, sort of to current standard, and that was a CAL FIRE thing, if I recall, but just an old bridge going across the wash there. And really, the only way to build this thing is to, is to go as cheap as you can go upfront, get a few houses in there for hopefully, you know, the cost of the house and very little infrastructure, and kind of get it rolling. And as the market will absorb the houses, then we could finance and build, build the rest of it. But our analysis now is that it's pretty, it's pretty break-even-ish. And of course, we don't have a crystal ball. If the market keeps booming and there's no, no collapse due to, due to the economic issues, then yeah, this thing could get built within the next few years, five years, maybe even quicker. But if we have a downturn, which I kind of think is coming, this thing won't pencil, and it'll, you know, sit there. And all we can do is, if the market will absorb it, what I can, I can, you know, give you my word, that we can, we can finance it, build it, if the market will handle the sales. That's really what it comes down to, unwinding that, to a plan, into the phasing plan, just to keep expenses down, to get it going, is, would be, would be the approach. So, that's about what I can tell you.
Thank you.
If I could offer-
David, did you have something to add?
Well, I certainly, you know, won't argue at all with Mr. Adelman. I mean, phasing is probably not a bad thought, at least one cul-de-sac at a time. Again, my sources tell me that we should see an increase in foreclosure, certainly after the first of the year, although I think I read something over the last week that said they may extend the moratorium on foreclosures in California. I'm not sure. So, I expect similar issues, let's say, but not as severe as back in, say, 2008. As far as the economy, I, I would agree that, you know, we just don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, we got a new- I mean, we've got a new, a new, uh, administration coming in, probably at the first of the year. Um, depends on what they do and, and what effect it has on interest rates, on, on the economy in general. I think Lake County isn't hit as severely as other areas. Uh, but, and, and again, I think there's a need for some upper-end homes or we're not going to get the, uh, upper-end people living in the community. So, again, we're not, we're not going to build 20 homes and, and hope they sell. I mean, that, there's no way you're going to do that. That's why I said we'd probably start with, with two or three and.
Oh, yeah, 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 you'd have to. Yeah, as far as the foreclosure moratoriums go and the eviction moratoriums, there's no rent or, or more, in this case, mortgage forgiveness. So, these are just liabilities that are building up and up and up. And I believe as a couple days go nationally, it's 700 billion. And Dave, Dave's correct, there's definitely local, whether it's city, county, or state, going to be very likely extensions once the national, um, moratorium ends. So, that's kind of up in the air, but eventually, those chickens are going to come up to roost. And my, my take on it is that, you know, what I've seen in just my experience is that poorer counties like, like Lake County tend to get hit hardest. They tend to get hit hardest and they come, you know, go down first and come back last. Um, we, we have really unusual migration patterns now due to COVID. So, we do have an exodus from the cities and rural areas are getting a boost from that. We're also seeing significant inflation, collapse of the US dollar, which might be very inflationary, which sort of helps keep the prices, you know, up, up a little bit. And, you know, when you say you don't have inventory, I mean, I go, I was on Zillow this morning, you know, double checking this, and there's, in that 350 to 450 range, there's quite a bit of inventory. It's not clear in the county, you know, most around Riviera and Buckingham and other areas. There's quite a few options for people to come buy a really nice house, you know, a couple thousand square foot home for 350 to 400 right now. And that's what gives me a little bit of pause of, you know, we got new construction and it is a beautiful area out there in Burns Valley, but still, we're looking at 450 to 500, probably 450 for break even on this thing, um, for let's say 1,600 square foot home. So, it's, it's, it's edgy. There's, there's not, you know, it's an edgy play. There's not a lot of money on the table there for developers and it, and it's quite a bit of work. And I think whoever you do it, there's going to have to be, you know, some understanding with the city that, that, you know, we can do what we can do, but, but I don't think anyone's going to build these things to, to lose money. It's going to be a pretty, pretty tough one, I, I, is my, again, my take on it.
Uh, Mr. Edelman, when we met a month or two ago and, and then you've repeated here again about the need to build a bridge, and I, I, to be honest, I'm just, I'm not envisioning where that would have to be, this bridge.
Okay, um, Mark, are you on? Mark Flamer? You know, I don't know how you un, Mark's on, but I don't know if he can unmute. Um, yeah, was on the, was on the, oh, where are we? I'm trying to get the direction straight, but is that the end of the? Yeah, you're going down the old highway. You go to, on the right hand, obviously.
Yeah, I, I think I got it unmuted. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. Oh, there's Mark. Yeah, Mark, you can come in.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the bridge, what it was is there's an existing bridge at the, uh, I guess the north end of Old Highway 53, um, that crosses the creek there. And what was proposed was a widening of Old Highway 53 to the road standards that were in play back then. Um, I think it required a four-foot widening with shoulder. And so, we were going to continue the same widening along the, the existing bridge. So, it wasn't a new bridge. It was, it was widening the existing bridge.
Bridge, it's on the highway.
Old highway.
All right, old highway.
Yeah, there's a bridge right there, Russ, as you pass this. Uh, just, just before you get to the, the egg ranch.
Yeah.
There's a bridge over the old highway.
Yeah, I, I, I get that, but I'm, so are you, so then are you proposing that there'll be some homes along that strip on the north side of, of the creek that meanders through the northern edge of the property?
No, there were no homes on the north edge of the creek.
Okay.
We, we were going to make that an open space, either for public, you know, ideally, uh, public, but this would be something that would have to go through the hearings and, and see what the community wanted. But ideally, from my perspective, we would make a public park there, have a public open space, like a dog park along that riparian corridor in the north. And if not, it would just be part of the subdivision and the, the people living there would have a park, like a green, green, open.
The egg ranch guy and his chickens will appreciate those dogs next to him, probably. You know? Okay, are there any other questions for either Mr. Edelman or Mr. Hughes? Are there any questions? I'll open this up for public discussion now. Are there any, uh, public comments, Madam Clerk?
It does not look like anyone on the Zoom meeting is raising their hand for comment, and I've not received any emailed or open town hall comments.
Okay, seeing none, I guess I will bring it back for, you're looking at me. Do we have some deliberation to counsel, uh, Councilmember Overton?
Yeah, I, I have one question, um, and probably for Ryan. Sorry, so I have a question for Ryan. Uh, are you out there? Um, I see that Dave Hughes is a vice president on this, um, um, one contractors here. And we also contract for sale for properties. Is that a conflict of interest?
Um, no, I don't, um, think so. I think he's not a employee or elected official with the city. He does, has done some work for the city in the past, but that doesn't preclude him from being able to also, um, bid on this, in my opinion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure before we move forward on that one. So, I would ask that. I'm sorry I didn't catch that earlier.
Yeah, I mean, and just generally speaking, if I could, I mean, we use, uh, Mr. Hughes on some transactions where we need someone to market the property. But I'd like a transaction like this, if this moves forward, um, we normally just work directly with the title company on it because there's no marketing this meeting.
Just, just wanted to make sure that something is going to come back.
That was, that was a good, that was a good catch, though.
It, it, am I still on?
Yes, you are.
Um, I, I think that needs updating because I'm not aware that I'm still a vice president of Summit Development. So, uh, I, I think that, I asked, I asked for a resume because I knew there was a lot of, uh, development that, that Barry's done in, in the city and in the county and elsewhere. Uh, so I thought it'd be good information to have. And I noticed that yesterday when I was going through it and I didn't mention it earlier. I do not believe I'm currently a vice president of Summit Development. I will be. Yeah, no, I, I, that's why I said I don't believe I am, so.
However, you are speaking for them today.
Yes, I am.
All right. Any? Bring it back to council and then we'll, I have brought it back to.
Yeah.
I, I just.
I'm not, I'm not, sorry. Um, one of, one of the things I'm worried about here is. One of the things I'm worried about here is, is having that paper map again like we had out there at Old Dam Road because we didn't require them to do any infrastructures. So, how are we going to make sure that doesn't happen again with this project? And that we have a piece of property sitting there again that isn't going to be proposed? So, what's the thought here on, on the process of, of timeframe of this? I understand that we're, there seems to me like they're a little worried about even selling the houses, so I'm kind of a little worried about this project.
Well, I mean, so just from the sort of global perspective, I mean, we understand that, um, the market challenges for Marquise Housing are extremely challenging in Lake County and particularly in Clearlake. That's why we're even talking about, um, the sale of a property like this at this type of price point, you know? And we hate, we feel like that we have to do some creative things to get that because, you know, you know, we heard from Mr. Edelman, he's looking and there's, you know, quite a few homes in 350, $450,000 range in Lake County, but we don't have those homes available in the city of Clearlake, and that's what we want. So, um, that's part of it, but our idea on structuring this, so we really, it's really important based on, um, some of the new housing statutes coming down January 1st that we have an exclusive agreement in place before the end of the year. Um, so that's, that's one piece of it. And then the other is the agreement that we put together, um, we would intend to have some type of opportunity to claw back the property or, I guess, that's probably not the right description, but, uh, like a right of repurchase if the project doesn't move forward within a certain period of time.
That's, that's also what I wanted to hear is like, what is the, what, what is our recourse here to have a piece of property that we're selling for this price? That we have some kind of a, something in our contract that says that we have the right to purchase back, uh, per se, for, you know, the same price if they don't do anything with it within a certain period of time? Uh, one of the things that I researched was, is that, uh, where we may have a lot of houses in our county, um, for sale in these price ranges, um, it was brought to my attention that people would much rather buy a new house than one that's already been lived in. So, um, I think there are some opportunities for us if we can get the project moving. Um, I, it sounds to me like that's going to be the problem with the economics is waiting to see if the economics is going to hold the, hold, hold it. So, okay, as long as we have something in the agreement that we were allowed to purchase the property back from either one of them, then, okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
And I would also clarify, I mean, we've, we've done some similar agreements to this. We've called them, um, letters of intent. This is structured as an exclusive negotiation agreement. Um, we, we're using those terms intentionally, but it's the same type of thing where we're wanting an exclusive negotiations with one of the developers for six months. And we would come back then with that purchase and sale agreement, um, that outlines the, the details of this a little bit more. And of course, they would start working on putting their map application together and so forth.
Brown, you're sitting in the audience here. Addie, did, are you sitting here to help us with any part of this or are you just curious?
She's here for another agenda.
Okay, uh, maybe you had that tentative map in your back pocket or something. All righty, uh, Vice Mayor Sloten, you have?
Yes, I, I, I think there's a tremendous demand for market rate housing even in Clearlake. Uh, I see the areas in where I live where some new houses are going up and they're being sold through even before they're finished. Uh, so I think there's a tremendous demand in it. I might disagree about interest rates and all that, but, you know, who knows that? Uh, my take on this is that, um, that's why I asked a question if, uh, Mr. Edelman could finance the construction of the infrastructure. And he's definitely saying, he has all the stuff ready to move faster than, um, Dave Hughes' group. Um, although Dave Hughes' group seems to have more, uh, borrowing power than, uh, Mr. Edelman with all the project he has done in the past. So, I just want to see it done as quickly as possible because, yeah, uh, economics do, do change. And, uh, you know, I think the sooner we have this rolled out and, uh, this, the better it is for the city of Clearlake.
Any other comments? Yeah, I kind of, in my listening to Mr. Hughes and Mr. Edelman, um, I've kind of gotten some, getting some concern about, um, negativity, uh, on Mr. Edelman's part on a project that he's wanting to take on. And while as, whereas Mr. Hughes seems to, uh, looking at it, and maybe it's because he's a realtor and you're supposed to be looking at it a little bit more positively. But one of the things that I would definitely want is my developer to think it's going to succeed. Um, so I, I think that, um, that will influence the way I would like to see this go. Um, my only concern, again, I think you've answered that, is that we do have a, an ability to, in the contract with whomever we go with, to buy back the property if it, if, uh, the developer fails to perform over, after a certain percentage or period of time. Uh, so anyhow, that's my two cents worth, uh, Councilmember Purdock. Do you kind of, oh, Councilmember Overton, please, go ahead.
Um, curious here, we have two different prices. We, uh, the option to purchase is, I guess, one of my concerns. Um, and we're, the other developer's willing to purchase it outright and the other one is, is just wanting to have the option in five years. So, um, um, does that mean that they're not really able to build then if they aren't purchasing it? Am I correct? Okay.
Yeah, there's a, be an additional step involved to.
Okay, all right. So, okay, well, that's my, that was my.
Any other questions from council? I guess it's time that we, uh, decide. As I said, I'm, the combination of the, of the price of 150 versus 100, fact that it's a purchase now, not an option. And to be honest, that the biggest thing in my mind is that, uh, we've got positively tea with the one proposal and, and fairly negative approach from the other one. My, I would tend to want to support the second motion from the summit group.
I'm, I'm, to finally talk, I, uh, I'm kind of looking at it, uh, both ways. I think proposal one can move quicker. And I might disagree with his assessment of need. Um, we personally put a market, a house on the market in the Buckingham area in the 400,000 range and within one day, um, we've had, uh, we have tremendous activity on it. So, I think there is a huge demand and I'm not so negative on, uh, the current markets at this point. So, I, and I think Mr. Edelman can move quicker than, uh, summit development at this point.
Councilmember Claffey.
Actually agree with you on that. I think the motivation doesn't seem to be there, like.
You need to speak.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I just, I, I'm concerned that the motivation's not there. Um, if, if someone doesn't believe that these homes can sell and has an option, um, there's a good chance that they're just going to sit on that until they feel like it's time to be invested. So, that, that gives me pause.
Thank you. Councilmember Purdock, do you want to add anything to anything? Well, then I will entertain, I guess, a motion to accept one or the other.
I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Mayor, that we accept proposal number two with TJG Summit Development Corporation and authorize our city manager to sign the execute and, uh, exclusive negotiation agreement for the purchase of 2,890 Old Highway 53.
Thank you. There's been a motion made to accept.
I'll second it.
Okay, and a second by, uh, Councilmember Overton and seconded by Vice Mayor Sloten. Can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, this is a successor agency item, so I'll be calling roll as the successor agency members. Member Overton?
Aye.
Member Claffey?
Aye.
Member Purdock?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloten?
Aye.
And Chair Kramer.
Aye. Okay, motion passes to accept Summit Development's offer. And we'll instruct, uh, staff to go forward with that. Thank both of you gentlemen for speaking today. Uh, Mr. Edelman, we've done a lot, we've, we've had a lot of things going with you in the past, uh, and I know that you're still out there and I really appreciate your, your offer, um, to share your information. And perhaps Mr. Hughes can get ahold of you offline about that if, if they so desire. Uh, we'll now move on to item number nine. Okay, Pearl Emery and Mullen Street Improvement Project Update. City Manager Flora, are you going to give that or turn that?
Mr. Schwartz is going to give the bulk of the presentation. I'm going to, uh, share my screen and put up a few pictures for him, but, uh, go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Emery and Council. Uh, please report your finished Pearl and Emery. Uh, these are all on there. Uh, Phil, who did on the project, uh, you're pretty important. You, Phil, who did on March twelfth, a little bit, they stepped in, it was good. Maybe you all learned.
Dave, Dave, do you mind just stepping up there?
Oh, my turn.
I'll start over, sorry. Um, Mayor Members of the Council are pleased to present that we have completed the Pearl and Emery and Mullen Street Improvement Project. Um, just to paraphrase and summarize your report that we provided in front of you, we opened the bids on March twelfth. We had seven bidders. I think we've learned from historical that we wanna be bidding these projects January to March, no later than April for sure. The engineer's estimate, uh, was allowed two million. The low bid was one point one million, one point one-six, I think, if I remember, remember correctly. Um, subsequent to that, because of the lower bid, um, we looked at doing an additional section of Mullen from Palmer to Fortieth. That actually was designed, we were in the midst of that when COVID finally hit, hit us, and, uh, met with Allen, and decided that, we did not know where Measure V revenues would be, so we have that design on the shelf, but we decided not to let that go to bid and stick with the base bid. That project, uh, you know, every project is unique, and every project presents some challenges, and this one was no different. Um, but, uh, on this project, uh, I just wanna first acknowledge the, the staff and the team that was out there, uh, doing it. Uh, Adeline Brown, Mike Baker, and Public Works Director Dale. Um, some of the challenges that we were presented on this project with some archaeological findings and unsuitable material, I have seen cost in the tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, um, through their efforts and, uh, aggressive and very interactive and hands-on management, um, like, the, uh, results of these findings and matters and issues that do and did come up during construction were very, very nominal. Um, we ended up with a final, uh, cost of about, uh, over here. One point two-one-six million, or about forty-nine thousand dollars over the base bid amount, uh, which is about four percent, and very, very proud of that, and very, very proud of, of your staff, because as I said before, just the archaeological findings that we were faced in dealing with, uh, could've, could've doubled the bid quite frequently. So, uh, they, they deserve a lot of credit for that. I'd also wanna give a thanks to Highlands Water, uh, once they realized what we were gonna be doing out there. They rushed, uh, a very large project for them, and they replaced an old four-inch diameter, um, water main with a, a new eight-inch diameter water main and new hydrants. So that whole region out there is, uh, now not only has much better roads and much better drainage, it also has much better fire protection and water service. Um, just got a couple of pictures I would review with you quickly, um, here. These are kind of the before and after, so this is a picture along Emery, and, uh, so this is what that picture looked like before, and in roughly the same location, that's what it looks like now. We tend to forget, uh, what things looked like before they were constructed, and then kind of moving on, uh, this is another picture a little further down Emery. Again, this is a before picture, and this is an after picture. You don't even hardly recognize the area. You know, you would not know you're in the same location based on those two pictures, something to be really proud of. The next one is, uh, another picture along Emery, being the longest area. And again, there's the before and after. And then, um, this is the far side of Emery where Emery intersects with Lake Shore Drive by Howard Gerardo, and that's the, the, the before picture, and this is the after picture. And then, moving on, uh...
Last time we had rain, it looked like, too.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question at this point?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I see that there's sidewalks on that side now? Um, that was not paved with major D and R, that's separate?
The sidewalks, um, on the right-hand side were there.
Right, the left-hand side were not.
And the left-hand side sidewalks, if there was infill in between, okay, if you, can we go back?
Can we go back, or...
Go, go, go one more back. So you can see from that picture there, there's no sidewalks.
Right.
So what we had there, you go ahead and go back through the intersection, is we had an infill of sidewalks due to an ADA matter. Um, you see how we have a crosswalk coming across? Okay, so we had to provide adequate ADA access along just that section. So yes, that was actually paved with Measure V money, but it's in order to, only to maintain the ADA access for that short, uh, section there that goes in front of, uh, Performance Mechanical.
Can I, can I address that? So, we've, in our Measure V committee meetings, we've literally talked about this type of thing for literally hours. Um, and the Measure V, um, project list, or whatever it was called, in the actual measure, um, does include sidewalks as an allowable expense. Um, however, um, as I think, you know, the council's aware, and certainly the Measure V committee, um, it's their position that we should really not spend much Measure V money on that type of thing. Um, and so, this is what we've told them before. The approach has been that if it was existing and we had to rework it in, then we would use it, but not to add new stuff in. But this is something that, um, you know, can change based on the direction of the council, but I do wanna make clear there are, a, a number of times we've heard that that's not an allowable Measure V thing. Um, curb gutter and sidewalks are specifically in the Measure V allowable expenditure list.
Sorry, uh, because initially it was definitely to be used for roads only. That's what it was put out to the public to be voted on, and that only the curbs, if necessary, to protect the road. Uh, so, um, I, I, and, and this has been a, some, been brought up to me that we're using the money, uh, you know, for, for sidewalks and other things than, uh, outside of just the curbs to protect the road. So that's the reason why I, when I seen that, I wanted to ask and bring it up, because it is a concern of our public that we're using the Measure V money not as it was designated out to them, why they voted on it. So, I just wanna make sure that we keep things clear, because this is a twenty-year, you know, uh, you know, balloon thing, and so when it comes back up, I don't want the people to think that we're, we're, you know, kind of using things incorrectly, so I, I'd really want it to be put out correctly.
No, I, I, I understand that. I, I'm just wanna make the point that, you know, I wasn't here at the time, but clearly there was a lot of confusion in the community about what Measure V dollars were gonna be spent for, but the measure, the ordinance that the community voted on and passed did include expenditures for sidewalks and additional things that we haven't even considered using Measure V funding for, like street signs and all other sorts of stuff like that, is in what was actually passed by the public, so...
And it would bring, it was necessary to bring it up to standard ADA standards, too, so there's a reason for it. Uh, councilmember Purdock, you have a comment?
I just wanna echo what the city manager shared. It was part of the ordinance, and, uh, we did have quite a bit of discussion. I think when Phil, and I can't remember his last name, the consultant, uh...
Dow.
Pardon?
Dow.
Yeah. Um, we had to look at bringing everything up to the code, and that's why these things were included. Um, there was a lot of conversation, and maybe the public wasn't in, but it was in the, in the actual ordinance that we voted on.
I'm just saying that that might be something we need to put back out again, or direct them to someplace on our website to look at the ordinance.
There you go.
So that, so that we're not, because when it starts coming to me, I always say when it hits three people, I, I have a concern about it, so when I've had a lot of questions about it.
That's a good, that's a good idea. It's transparency and...
Yep. It, it is on our website. I'm just, I, I get the confusion, because literally at the last two Measure V committee meetings we have, who those committee members should be familiar with that, we talked about this literally for multiple hours. Yeah.
You, Vice Mayor Sloten, you had a comment?
Yeah, it's, uh, amazing, four percent over. That's, that's pretty good, after I heard what all those things you had to deal with, with, uh, archaeological findings, and I liked it designed the rolled curb on downhill side and the flash, flush curb on the other side. It looks really nice, and I drove it today. It looks awesome.
Congratulations, thank you.
I don't know if you had any feedback, maybe added, you know, any feedback from the residents along those streets?
I've just been very happy except they complained about the speed of vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, I got that one, too. I got that one, too.
You can't make 'em happy.
It's the same in the avenues where we just chip sealed.
Same thing, same thing, speed.
By the way, how is that holding up after the rain? You haven't looked yet.
Uh, Dale, um, on the chip seal problem, are we still feeling pretty good about how that's holding up? I haven't been up there.
Okay.
I haven't been up there since it rained.
Okay, I'm, I guess I need to...
Councilmember Purdock, you've been up there, so what's it look like to you?
Um, it actually looks good. Um, I shared some of my concerns that, uh, with them, but, uh, the last time I drove it, it does seem like we might be getting some roots, or it, uh, maybe, um, it, we're starting to get a couple of bumps. I, I don't know how else to describe it. It looks like maybe through expansion, construction, um, uh, there's a little ridges, a couple ridges that have developed, so take a look at that.
These streets look really good, Mr. Schwartz. They're amazed at the difference these photos, uh, point out, uh, the, between the before and the after. So I, I think...
I think you're looking at Mullen's there, and if we just scroll, continue to scroll through quickly, uh, next one you'll see is Pearl. And that's a before and after.
And that's the city's parking lot on the left in that photo, isn't it? Uh...
No, I think that's a commercial business.
Uh, on the left side of the street.
Looking at the, looking at the back of Realty World, which we purchased.
Which, which...
And the last one is just the, uh, kind of the other end of Pearl, getting to back towards Yule Avenue, I believe. So, um, and you can see, you know, the Measure V committee and, and folks, we understand, you know, so far what we've been told as the designers of these projects is that, you know, utilize these funds for as much asphalt paving as possible. And that's, that's what we have continued to do. You can see through the pictures other than the about hundred or so feet of sidewalk, um, by Howard Gerardo, you, I don't think you see any other sidewalk. And when possible, um, we don't even use, you know, curb and gutter, rolled curb and gutter, or, you know, if I could just use a, a Mostrid, it's a lot cheaper. So when we can drain the road all to one side, like, like, uh, Councilman, uh, Sloten had noticed, uh, on Emery, you know, that, again, that's just a minimizing the amount of concrete and, and trying to maximize our, our dollars there. I would take just a moment also, if I could, just to review what's coming up for your Measure V projects for twenty-two-one.
I was gonna mention that I'm really gonna be looking forward to your report next year at this time.
Yeah.
And I think Vice Mayor Sloten and Councilmember Purdock will as well.
Yeah, I, I just also wanna mention, the chip seal is amazing up in the avenues.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'm really, I really apologize for interrupting, but Ms. Brown has to leave, and I, I just, while she's here, I just want the councilmembers to know how valuable I think she is to these projects. You know, she took on construction management a little over a year ago, um, and I don't like change orders, and Addie does a great job of keeping on these contractors, making sure they're on track, um, working with Dale and Dave, and keeping that stuff to a minimum, and keeping all of us informed, and I, I just really appreciate it.
I think that she deserves a round of applause.
Yay!
Good job, Addie. Thank you, Addie. Addie?
So, for, um, so I'm glad you guys are looking forward to twenty-twenty-one. I'm nervous as I'll get out about twenty-twenty-one.
Oh, no, we don't wanna hear that.
That's what, that's what you pay me to be, is nervous.
Okay.
You know, we, uh, obviously, uh, you know, we have the sulfur fire project that we're in process and getting ready to put that out to bid here very shortly, right? And so it's seven point seven-eight miles, and, and that's, that's a big project, and, you know, we're still surveying part of it as we're designing, so it's a, it's a big project. So, with Measure V projects, what are, uh, what we've looked in at, what we've been looking at, Mullen's is already designed and ready to go, so you have about a thousand feet of roadway of Mullen's, which is a continuation of the Pearl and Emery project to the north. It's extremely important to that project because it provides a con- continuity of drainage to that area, and we're gonna be running some drain pipe up that. So, that's designed and ready to go, so that thousand feet of Mullen's from Palmer to, uh, West Fortieth Street is on Measure V projects for next year. Acacia Street Rehab, that's from Arrowhead to the end of the school property. Um, trying to figure out, let me see if I have a, um, it's about seven hundred feet or so in length. Um, we have Alveda Avenue and drainage, and that's from Yule to Howard. That kind of focuses, kind of more of expansion in the Pearl and Emery area. Um, Gulf Avenue Rehab, again, from Yule to Lake Shore. That's in kind of that downtown, uh, Pearl and Emery area. And then Howard Avenue, um, from Yule to Ja- Jago, or Yago, however you wanna pronounce that, is kind of down in that downtown area as well. Additionally, um, we're looking at three to five miles of chip seal for next year, assuming, hoping that we're satisfied with what we have already installed. And, um, I have a map on that. I don't, I don't remember the streets of, all of those streets, but I do, the, the one street that we are considering that we, that we recently added to that is Sonoma between, um, Acacia and Modoc. Because Modoc is set for some SB one funding to be paid with a different funding source. So, that kind of ties that area together with a nice interconnection there for some chip seal. Most of the other chip seal is up in the avenues for now. Got three to five miles of chip seal.
And that's between Phillips and Boils from...
Yeah, it's in that Eighteenth, Nineteenth, Twenty-first, Phillips, Boils, all of the avenues. I can certainly get you a map. I, I, again, I don't have it.
Yeah, I mean, the thought was to do one section and do a big, you know, all-in-one area and do a big thing. It's gonna be cheaper for us, so building off of the improvements we have on Phillips right now, so maybe take two blocks, I think it is, over to Boils to the east, and then from Eighteenth all the way up to Fortieth would be just under five miles, so...
That's, that's what I'd understood, that to me.
That area for chip seal, in comparison to other areas, because of the amount of base rock and grating that the city has done over the years, we feel is gonna hold up better, give us the best chance for success, and having the, the chip seal have the longest useful life as possible. Again, and Dale has brought this up, a couple of things that Dale wants to try to get in for next year, uh, for twenty-twenty-one, which really makes me nervous, is, uh, some preventative maintenance, uh, design crack seal and microsurface for, um, Lake Shore Boulevard from Gulf to Olympic.
Lake Shore Drive?
Lake Shore Drive, I'm sorry. From Gulf to Olympic, and then preventative maintenance from Olympic to Highway, or, uh, on Olympic from, uh, Highway fifty-three to Lake Shore. So that's a very large, uh, very large amount of preventative maintenance. And again, with these chip seal projects in probably three years, we'll probably wanna re-chip seal, the chip seal that we're referring to now, which is on the Eighteenth there. So, just kind of an ongoing...
I have a question on preventative or repairs, anyway. Are we, and this might be better for Dale, are we doing potholing now?
Yes.
Hey, 'cause there's...
Not right now, today.
No, there's, there, there are a number of streets that I drive regularly that desperately need it.
And, and just for clarity, Mr. Engineer, the, um, the Olympic and Lake Shore Drive is not Measure V money, the preventative maintenance.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm asking.
I think that's a question for the city manager.
Well, well, we, I mean, I, we, I'm not sure where we are on those. I mean, I think we could probably use gas tax.
I thought that was gas tax.
Gas tax available. I mean, I mean, I guess...
Yeah, I mean, and a- again, I mean, that's, it's one of those things that a lot of people
have that understanding, that also is not something that's specifically in Measure V, so, um, we'll try to keep up and keep projects in line with the current...
I would think you had the same understanding of Lake Shore and Olympic or...
Or gas tax.
Gas tax.
Well, okay.
We'll talk later.
We'll circle around.
Councilmember Claffey, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had a question on the chip seal. Um, so you said it has basically a...
Yeah, I just had a question on the chip seal. So you said it has basically a five-year lifespan. When you reapply, is the investment similar? Is it less because you're, you're resurfacing an already-done road?
It's, it's essentially similar, yeah. If you paid $5, you're paying another $5. But what ends up happening is over time, after two or three applications, now you're 10 or 12 or 15 years down the road, you actually have almost a painted street.
Yep.
Particularly because base is good.
Pardon?
Particularly because the base material is already good.
Yeah, you've got phenomenal base material. Those roads out there with that gravel, they're hard. You can't drive it. You can't drive an Ellen's road, so.
The one question about the, the roads, we're gonna be chip sealing, are, we gonna make sure that the roads are a consistent width on the chip seal? And I refer back to the one where this year kind of went around a rock that was protruding out and left that rock there. Is, is that, are we going to grade it? Go ahead, you.
I was gonna say, so essentially it goes from a two-lane to a one-and-a-half lane, where this rock protrudes out into the, the street.
Well, I think we'll do a better job.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
There you go.
Well, good enough.
Yeah, it was a test model, and the whole point, Cal C, Cal 3, about chip sealing is that when I arrived, and we're trying to grade 60 miles of street every summertime, is that 90 days after it's been graded or less, you don't know that they've been graded. And so, you know, I'm just like, this, this is, gotta be a better way to, you know.
Yeah.
To, to balance that out, to try to, you know, you, we can afford to go pave them all, but what can we afford to do to start minimizing costs? So that's kind of how.
So, so do you have anything else?
Yeah, today is just a test.
So do you have anything else going for next year?
Uh, lots of stuff, but not roadway stuff.
Oh.
We have, we have the, the project from the Sulphur Fire.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going with that.
Oh, you talked about, yeah, well, I mentioned that in the beginning of my presentation.
No.
You've got the 7.78 miles of roadway from the Sulphur Fire, and, you know, Allen's applied for, so I don't know if you want to talk about the DI arc step, or?
Well, I mean, we're, we're a little bit of field from the agenda item here, but I would, I would say that, you know, we have significant amount of funding from our PG&E settlement dollars to focus on that project, but there's also some disaster recovery dollars available through CDVG. There's a deadline tomorrow, so I'm gonna be finish, finishing four applications for funding through some programs that they have there, and, and we'll see, in an ideal world, we'll be able to apply those dollars in large part to this project that we're working on now, which would potentially allow us to use the settlement dollars for, for something else. But I'll, I'll keep the council updated on that. It's gonna be in the first quarter of next year before we really know how that's gonna work out.
Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. Thanks a lot, Dave, for that report. We will now move on to item number 10, discussion regarding a letter of intent to purchase a portion of the airport property located at 6356 Our Moho, Myho Avenue and 6393 James Street in Clear Lake. Didn't even know those were streets. Okay, City Manager Flora?
Yes. Yes, so the, the council authorized me to enter into an LOI, and this was back in July, I believe, for six months with King Management, then later we entered into an LOI with the same group for the Red Bud Park property. They were here recently, and we looked at all the, the sites, and they, they love what's going on. They love both of the sites. They want to focus on the Red Bud one first, and, but they're still very interested in working with us on the airport project. So I think it makes sense with what we have going on currently with the airport project, that maybe doing that sort of as a second phase will work well with the timing on everything else we have going on there. But they are interested in extending the LOI, so they still have exclusive rights to work on, on that project. And so that, that's kind of the deal. We think that, you know, you never know till a lot of these things come together, but they, they seem to know their business and be excited about moving forward, and so we're very optimistic about it.
Thank you, City Manager Flora. Are there any questions? City Councilmember Overton?
Yeah, sorry for not mentioning that. The thought was, you know, at this point, another six months, and, you know, we'll see how it goes from then, but the hope is that at least within that six months, we'll have more clarity on where both the Red Bud project are, as well as have some of our design work done on the airport, and then we can, we may be able to at least, you know, go ahead and get some type of purchase agreement put together by then. But at this point, just another six months, so into July of 2021.
Any other questions? I'll open it up to public comment.
Doesn't look like anyone in the Zoom is raising their hand, and I have not received any email or town hall comments on this item.
Thank you. Seeing no, no public comments, I'll now close public comment and bring that back for deliberation and action. Oh, there, anyone have anything, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I want to authorize the city manager to sign an extension to the proposed letter of intent with King Management LLC to purchase a property of the airport property, a portion of the airport property.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Sloton.
I'll second.
Seconded by new councilmember Claffey. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Claffey?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardoc?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sloton?
Aye.
Mayor Kramer?
Aye. Motion passes. All right, that's the last item on our agenda. So I want to thank you to everyone who took the time to submit their comments or participated via Zoom, which would be basically Mr. Hughes and Mr. Adelman, and to those who are watching our meeting on YouTube. We'll now adjourn the meeting at 3:16.